It's all yours, Matt.
All right, it is 5:45. We're going to call this special meeting to order at 5:45. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance and the delay that goes with it. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so it's kind of a one-issue meeting. I think a couple of smaller issues snuck in, as they always do, but they're kind of related issues. So the one, sort of the one issue is several members of the board have have made us aware that there are some, the members of the board and some folks in town believe we should go back to in-person meetings. I would just start off the discussion by saying this. The, we should be aware that the governor has expressed that the emergency order, that's the emergency order which, I'm sorry, I didn't read before this meeting, but if everybody's okay with it, maybe I'll read it at the end. So the emergency order is standing right now. It expires every 21 days and the governor has come out and said he's probably gonna let that, he's probably gonna keep renewing until there's a vaccine. So really overarching here is that our ability to meet electronically will still exist for the near future, but if truly residents want us to meet in person, that's something to consider tonight. So I'll put it out there to the board. What's everybody's thoughts for the why and how and all that good stuff? What's everybody thinking?
Well, you probably know I'm erring on the side of caution. I have a partner who is a pilot. I think Newton's numbers are terrific and due to the nature of town hall and in and out and cleaning and coast quarters, I would like to continue to see the numbers down before coming in. And I'm a little bit concerned if I'm with a partner who's starting to fly again. That's it. Or if there was an issue that required, really, people like we require to be there, we come in as needed because it hasn't helped, at least in my opinion, our ability to run the town.
I think Larry was trying to jump in.
Yeah, so Matt, my opinion is I think we should offer to all the boards that we try to hybrid. Those who want to go to town hall can go to town hall. Those who want to stay on Zoom can stay on Zoom. But at least we're making an effort for the public to show up at the meetings if they like to.
That seems very reasonable.
I'm actually in favor with a hybrid approach.
So Charlie, before we move on, any thoughts, Charlie? Charlie might be on mute.
He looks like it.
Once Charlie gets off on mute, feel free to jump in. But the, I think what I'm hearing, and I haven't expressed it yet, but I, whatever we do, there are two things that are deal breakers for me. One is it has to be a hybrid approach, and I think we're all kind of, I don't know about all of us, but majority of us think that makes sense. And two, we can't keep cleaning the town hall for 400 bucks every time or whatever it is. So what we have to do is we have to be in a position to be able to do the cleaning in-house with our own custodian because I don't want to see us spending, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have people going through that main hall, I don't want to have the cleaning crew have to come through every time for 400 bucks a pop or, I think one of them was 200 if it was a smaller thing, but it's a lot of money. So those are my.
Yeah, no, I don't think we should need to do that either. I think what we should do is have the hand sanitizer at the doorway, only allow entry in through the upper door for the meet, you know, for the hall. So basically close off downstairs access and require anyone who comes in to wear a mask and use the hand sanitizer on their way in and stay on on the way out. That will also help.
Yep. Kate, you add your hand up?
Note, to wear the mask properly. I don't know if anyone's noticed people just wearing them and letting their nose hang out. I think that badges are clear just because it doesn't defeat the purpose.
Yeah, there's some, there's some great mask interpretations out there, I think, that are kind of funny. But under the chin's my favorite. This, I don't think this works when you just wear it under the chin.
I'd be curious to hear what planning board thinks about the idea.
Are they all supposed to be on planning board right now?
What?
Is, are planning boards supposed to be on now? Like, should I go tell Mike downstairs or what?
No, no, the planning board meeting starts at seven.
Okay, just checking, thanks.
Well, because we talked about this two weeks ago. And one of our big concerns is, at least a couple of months ago, when you talked about opening town hall for meetings, there was going to be, because of social distancing in the hall, you were going, only going to be able to have about 25 people in the hall total. Now, for the selectmen, that may not be a problem. For the planning board, it is. Because basically, we have been running 35 to 50 people at our meetings. And, you know, so that to, there was, because Larry had brought up, having the planning board ask the Board of Selectmen to have open meetings. And his, his motion failed five to two. So the, at least as of two weeks ago, the majority of the people on the planning board said that the Zoom meetings are working for us. And they probably are a better choice. I mean, when you're talking about hybrid, I'm not sure what exactly you envision as a hybrid.
I think we need to, this might, might be a good, if Roger, you're also, we might have to transition to cable committee for this one. But I think what Larry and I were talking about is we're still on Zoom. So if Kate, for example, doesn't want to come in in person, she can still go on Zoom to interact with us, the rest of the board members who are in the hall. But at the same time, we're still have a cable feed on channel 20. But the idea is there's still interactiveness for people who are on Zoom. But Roger, does that make sense before we ask cable if we can do it?
So you're gonna, you're gonna run a Zoom meeting at the same time as you have, so how are the, I guess, I don't understand how it's gonna work.
Right, so if it's okay, Roger, I'm gonna transition to basically Jamie and Diane to tell us how it's gonna work, or you can tell me it's not gonna work at all, or, because here's, here's the way I see it is, we've tried it, everybody go back in time, March 16th, I think it was, was the last time we're in the hall and we had a couple of people on the phone. And the phone didn't work too well. So I know, I know for the Board of Selectmen, we're all sitting with laptops in front of us anyway. So one of us, two of us, whatever, would be able to log into Zoom. What do you guys think?
Well, Jamie and I have spoken. And with the, what you want to do, it's not possible with the equipment that we have at this point. We are looking to get in, hold on. We are looking to the people that installed the equipment to see what we would need extra in order to do this. I'd like Jamie to explain a little bit better why it's not possible, then you'll get a good idea why. Go ahead, Jamie.
And another thing on top of that is the public input. You'd have to have a separate computer at the podium to be able to get into your Zoom session. And then the scheduling of who's going to speak next. As a board chair, you'd have to worry about two, multiple locations of people and no line of people. So you'd have to have increased, increased computer usage at the town hall. We would have to broadcast from the, from the singular screen and everyone would have to still log into your Zoom meeting. And where your own microphone, the other microphones as well, to run the cable program. And the feedback that's gonna happen in that room is going to be very hard to control and maintain. Just the amount of, the closeness of proximities between laptops with their microphones on. I know when we ran that, a planning board meeting on the 14th of July, Diane was sitting with one computer at one end of the table and another at the other end. And the feedback loop that was created, you'd have to mute one and unmute one, you know, if you needed to speak. It was, it's, it's not gonna be pleasant for a listener to hear that. And just the logistics behind the, the planning of the public to speak. We don't have the equipment right now to look at live streaming through cable. We can live, live stream if we're in the, in the building and recording, so it's not really true live streaming. It would just be a broadcast of the Zoom meeting. That's what we did for the planning board. But it's just, it's, there are a lot more questions than there would be answers even with a quote hybrid, whatever, you know, hybrid in person. Everyone would have to have their own individual stuff. Everyone would have to have proper protocols for when they can speak, when they can't speak. Imagine the chair not being in the same room as public. It just, it's very hard to maintain that quorum for a meeting and all the audio issues. And, you know, for the audio issues of feedback and everything, I would be concerned about older citizens who could not hear as well getting increasingly frustrated and, you know, any ADA compliance issues with hearing impairments. That's just my point of view. From, from what I've heard, there are Zoom rooms that you could purchase, which would have, which would make the town hall into a Zoom room. But even then, it's, it's for running meetings when there's one presenter. So that's, I think that's right, Diane, like that was what was supposed to?
So can I, can I simplify the question here? What if the only people who were on Zoom were the board members who weren't able to be in the room? So there, we'd have Zoom up and maybe we had Kate and one other person or two other people.
So all public?
But in other words, in other words, you don't have, you're not putting the Zoom out to the whole town to come in and participate. They're on channel 20 or they're sending their questions in advance or they're coming in person. It's just board members on the Zoom. Does that change your thoughts at all?
So logistically, yes, that would be a little easier. Ethically, probably not. Just the accommodations of people who may not be able to participate in a meeting. I'm wearing a different hat in that aspect. I would be, I would question, you know, the, the need to, or I would, I would push back and say that you're hampering public participation potentially if that's the, if that's the route. But logistically, I think that that's an easier solution if you only have one place for public to participate. I'm just not sure requiring public to come into the town hall is what you, is the ground that you want.
Kate, did you rub your hand up?
I did, but I forgot what I was gonna say.
Anybody else comments, concerns?
Well, back to the Zoom meeting. So it sounds, in a sense, the downside of opening town hall, even if we were all there, is given the conditions, fewer people are able to participate. Is that kind of what I'm hearing? I mean, in a sense, if we were all, if fewer people can participate, there's less room in town hall. It's harder for people who have, you know.
I would, I would, I hate to do this to the planning board, but right now, sort of question one is what we do for a Board of Selectmen's meeting? And Roger is absolutely right. Despite what I'm hearing, no one ever goes to any Board of Selectmen's meetings. I'm sorry. We never have anybody at the meetings.
But they are on the call sometimes.
Right. It's typically just the five of us and Diane and Nancy. So that's like my concern number one. Can we make that happen with social distancing? I say yes. And then planning board is our next problem, so.
And looking at what needs to happen to make it work.
Yes, we can hear you.
We gotta start somewhere, Matt. So why not? That's the way I look at it. I agree with Larry.
No, we are.
Yeah, we heard that. So, I mean, really what it comes down to is if we wanted to have a Board of Selectmen's meeting next week on September 1st and see what happens, so we have, you know, whoever, whoever shows up from the board in the room, somebody logs onto Zoom from their computer, just one computer, let's say, and we bring in those board members who do not want to come in in person, and we see how it works. Kate?
Works for me.
Again, my, I think that's a good idea. Again, my concern, and for you too, with my partner is a pilot who is having his first trip, will come home a day or two right before I would come in September 1st. Makes me nervous. That's all I'd like, we'd better not for me to try to Zoom then and see how it goes. If it's, but I'm hearing it's not possible, so I'm very confused.
Well, no, I think, I think what I'm saying, and Kate, what you just said, I think we all understand your reasoning. And that's, that's fine. I, we, I think we all understand that. And it might not just be you. It might be others as we go along in this thing. But I think what it comes down to is, and I hear Jamie's concerns, but this, what we're actually proposing for public access is actually better than it's been for 70 years or whatever, you know, you know what I mean? Like, the, the public can, if, if we have the meeting in the room on September 1st with one or two people on Zoom, the public can still come in, the public can still email us, they can still call Diane and give comments or whatever. The public can, you know, if, if they really need, if somebody needs to, and again, I'll make the same joke. We never have people go into these meetings. They do on occasion. But if they needed to interact and they felt unsafe going into the town hall, we could get them on the Zoom somehow. And really, what I think I keep coming back to is we've got to try it in maybe September 1st, Board of Selectmen's meeting, as we try it, one computer, so it's not massive echo. Because we tried it with a phone, an iPhone sitting on the table, and that didn't work so well. This has to work a little better. Maybe there's delays, but we have to give it a shot. Because otherwise, if we don't do that, then we're doing what we're doing exactly right now until we have new equipment, which I don't know if we want to invest in that.
So we, so just before you go on, your problem with that scenario is somebody steps up to the microphone, that Zoom person will not hear that. Anybody in the Zoom meeting will not hear any public input. They will not hear your public input either because remember, you're talking on your computer. There's only one computer there. Do you see this, see the issue that I have with Zoom and doing this?
So you're talking about a delay?
No, you won't hear it.
So if there's a computer.
Well, I mean, let me finish explaining. So think about it this way. You've got, you've got a microphone that's in the middle of the floor, right? You have your Zoom meeting on my computer, for instance, and I'm sitting at the table. That mic, my microphone will not pick up for what anybody says on those microphones to go to be broadcast to the Zoom meeting. Does that make sense? Jamie, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. If you wanted to have people in the room, everyone should have their computer and a microphone available to them so that the person on Zoom or the, the other board members on Zoom would be able to hear everything happening. I think when the, the last meeting, when there was a phone call, and I think Kate was on that call, she couldn't hear what was happening two tables down.
And that's, that's the issue. What if we were to get headphones similar to what Diane and I are wearing? For the, yes, Diane, it looks lovely on you. But if all the members who were in the town hall in front of their computers logged into Zoom, but instead of using the computer speakers, the PC speakers or the computer microphone, and we used headphones, would that take away from the feedback? Because then we would be able to hear the public, we would still wear the microphone so that everything that we say can be picked up by the cable and by whoever else is in the room. What do you think about something like that?
So you would be missing from cable broadcast, anyone that's not, you cannot broadcast the Zoom feed with sound in that instance. So anyone who is on the Zoom feed that's not in the room wouldn't get picked up by cable.
I'm saying except for one computer that would actually use the PC mic or whatever so that it can be picked up by a cable microphone. So when the public speaks in Zoom, it would be picked up by that computer.
And how would that audio get out?
Yeah, the audio would be coming from the computer speaker and the microphone would pick up that audio.
Because we've done that in some screening where we added another microphone in front of the computer, amplified the computer audio, did that in that water safety thing. I don't know how that would work.
So we did try that for the last planning board meeting when we did the 14th. And we had, we had one of those, one of the lavalier microphones that you normally wear on the computer. And the computer wasn't designed, the computer monitors are not designed to amplify sound into one spot. It's meant to support your ears and those are at 45-degree angles. It would be very hard to pick up from what's going on. I mean, there's, there's gotta be some sort of line out, line in that we could work on. We tried that, Diane, right? And the, the equipment in the, in the town hall did not support the line out from the computer into the cable.
That would, how, what, I'm sure there's something that does that, like, just having purchased microphones for other things that may not be too expensive. What are your thoughts?
Well, the, so when you go and you connect to your computer over at the, at the town hall, you have a lot, you have an HDMI cord and you also have this little line out cord. We tried the HDMI cord and the line out, so that would pick up the speakers from there. There was something not working well when we tried that. A couple, we tried demos before the meeting. And so we reverted to having the handheld microphone there, and you picked up like half the conversations. Audio, audio was horrible.
So in that, we use my computer, my personal computer, as that one that Jamie is talking about that ran the Zoom and then actually broadcast to the projector. So it was in the Zoom meeting, it was picking up whatever was being spoken. And Jamie ended up putting two little, my, two of those lapel microphones on my computer, my personal computer, to see if that would help. And it helped a little, but still, it didn't, it didn't, like you said, you had, you'd miss, you'd miss something. The audio was breaking up.
But so if I, if I had a laptop hooked up, let's say we're not in the town hall and in the average conference room, I've seen this before, you hook up through an HDMI or USB or whatever, you hook up a laptop to the projector in the conference room. It projects onto the screen, so you can see what's on the screen, and you have external speakers in the conference room somewhere, right? So, so you have the audio coming from that Zoom. So basically, all the participants in the room can see and hear what's on the screen via Zoom. Isn't that essentially what we're saying here? Do we have the capability to do that?
Well, with that, you would have a feedback. So you'd have the speakers coming in through Zoom and you would pick them up in whatever devices you were wearing, and you would get a feedback loop from the people that are sitting in the town hall with that service, with, with the Zoom happening and then the Zoom happening here, the microphone happening. It's just, it's, it's a feedback loop nightmare unless you could hardwire it directly from the computer back to the, behind the stage.
You're saying the feedback's coming from the lavaliers?
In your instance, it would be coming back, coming from the individuals wearing their own lavaliers unless they were muted while the Zoom conference was playing in the town hall.
So what if, what if we got rid of the lavaliers and had a, well, I guess we couldn't have a pass around mic. But I don't know. I don't know what the, it sounds like there's no simple answer here. What are people thinking?
So can, there's no way, I know you can live stream through Zoom. There's no way to fit a live stream from Zoom into the cable network, right? That's what you're saying?
No, you have, we're looking at.
We don't have the right equipment yet.
We don't, we don't have that equipment.
Correct.
How much is that equipment?
Well, I don't know. We, I, I'm waiting to get a quote or what, what can actually be done with what we have and what, you know, how much it's gonna cost.
Okay, because I know Matt always talks about coming into the future.
Who knew the future would be this?
Yeah, and if we have another uptick, we might be very glad that we have this possible.
So we'll, we'll get that information. And, but at this point, it is, I think Jamie and I would recommend that you hold off until we get more information to see if it can even be done. Unless you don't want to use Zoom for your meetings and you just want to be at the town hall like a regular meeting, then you're fine to do that.
And how do we do even non-publics with the?
Well, non-public, you're not in the, you'd be downstairs doing your non-public.
Can't be six apart.
Let's, let's, one problem at a time. But, but, so let me, let me go way back in time here. So what about a telephone line? How can, how can we make a phone work better in that room? So, so somebody can hear, who's ever on the phone can hear what's coming out of our lavaliers, out of the speaker. And at the same time, we can hear them when they say, hey, Chair, you know, I have something to say. How can we do that?
How many?
I'm at a loss. I don't know if that's a possibility using Zoom or using any, even not Zoom, even, even when we have.
I think what I'm, I think what I'm saying is where's our nearest hard line for the phone?
That would be the planning board office.
And can we somehow, you know what I'm saying? Can we somehow get a microphone in front, in front of that phone with the, with the line open?
Matt, comment?
Go ahead.
All right, so a couple of things. I think we should just go with the Selectmen's meeting. If we get a quorum, we're good. We'll just do regular meetings. Those who can't make it, they can't make it. Number two, on the planning board part, I didn't like Roger's answer because at one of our meetings, it was the governor's fault that we can't meet. And then in a minute, in a second meeting, he was blaming the selectmen that we couldn't meet. People are talking and blaming the selectmen. That's why I called, I asked for this meeting to, A, if the planning board doesn't want to meet, they don't want to meet. But we should open it up. If we get the quorum to meet, we get the quorum. If we don't, we can go to step two. This is gonna go on for another eight months, so we can't sit idle for eight months, nine months.
All right, so Larry, putting aside the second part of your statement, which will probably lead to an argument, the first part of your statement, do you want to make that a motion?
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion for the Select Board to meet on September 1st for our first meeting. Just the regular way, on cable, at town hall, for those who want to show up. Those, for those who don't want to show up, can't show up, they can watch it on, on cable. If they have a question, they can call one of us, and we'll see how it goes from there.
They can't do that, Larry.
Yeah, they can't do that. I would, I would cut your motion down a little, by a few words, and I think.
All right, so the motion is for the Select Board to start regular meetings September 1st.
Okay, is there a second? Was that Charlie?
It's me.
Okay, discussion on the motion, just the motion. Okay, discussion on the motion, just the motion.
Okay, so are we going to require all attendees, including board members, to wear masks during the whole meeting? Because if so, that may affect the ability of people to hear us speak.
Yep.
If, if we could, we could wear the mask, and then when you speak, you can take it down off your mouth. We're going to be six feet apart. If there's only, you know, even if the five of us show, seven of us show up, we can, we can do social distance up there. Kingston's doing it. If they believe Plastow's meeting, they're doing it. If we don't do it.
So the masks to go in and out, but once we're at our station and we're six feet apart from everyone else, we can remove the masks so we can be heard.
If you feel comfortable, absolutely.
Correct.
Or we could meet in a tent, and then I'll come.
Yeah, but what's, is there an issue with hearing people through masks? I haven't, I haven't experienced that.
I have.
Yeah, I think we need masks. We're in a room together, we need masks on.
I personally was elected and I'm not comfortable because of a real concern with a pilot partner not being able to attend a meeting. Because where I am now, I don't think that is sensible, and with also, that's another story. But I am very much in favor of looking into the equipment. I even know that even before the governor's order, there was always an emergency a select member could attend virtually. I don't know how that was done. I know it wasn't done well, so I, I'm, that's my position. I mean, to me, it almost seems like, can we just wait? I know the public's eager, but by waiting two weeks to get estimates to maybe speak, see if we have other, know any other towns or someone who's figured out how to do a hybrid meeting, which I know can be done. And also, you're getting more public to attend, which is happening, and I don't see the harm in waiting. But again, it's, it's what the, what you guys, what the vote is. My position, I'm done. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Larry's motion? Just his motion as, as written, and, and it's been long enough. Diane, read the motion back for us. If you have it written down.
Yep, I do. Ms. Selectman, what's his name, Foot, move to meet to begin selectmen's meeting on September 1st in the town hall. And that every, yeah, in the town hall, that was it.
Yep. Okay, and there was a second by Charlie.
Correct.
I just want to call everybody's attention. We have kind of a hard stop at 6:30. So I know we still have stuff to talk about, so I'm going to call for a roll call vote. So Larry, how do you vote?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Lisa?
Nay.
Kate?
Nay.
Oh, I must be the chair. I'm the, the deal breaker here. So I'm going to vote yes to meet next week. However, I still have concerns. Because basically, we have an elected, we're, we're, we're essentially saying elected people can't participate. So I have concerns about that, but I think it's worth trying to meet next week. I also am interested because, you know, I, if, if people really want us to meet in person that badly, I'm not hearing from them myself. I travel in different circles than others, but I haven't had anybody contact me through email to say, you guys absolutely have to meet in person. This is ridiculous. So I mean, I would go back to something Kate said. I think, I think it's working. Zoom, full functionality of Zoom, I think works. But like I said, I'm a yes to meet next week. Let's see how it goes.
Yeah, I also believe that there's more of a request or a need for the other two boards specifically, ZBA and Planning Board, because of the size of the documentation that needs to be reviewed than there is for, say, recreation or select board or even conservation to be, to have to meet in person. I think our Zoom meetings are working very well for us.
And the more people meet, the more people are in the space, and the indoor space is the one space where it can get nicer.
Yeah, so that motion passed. I'd just like to say, so we'll meet next Tuesday. I'm going to wear a mask. I think everybody should be wearing a mask, basically is what it comes down to. If we're going to meet with a quorum, it sounds like, it sounds like we'll at least have the, the yays as the quorum in the meeting next week. If somehow the Cable Commission can come up with a miracle between now and Tuesday, that'll definitely be welcome. We can count on a miracle.
I'll do some research.
And in the meantime, you know, Kate's question about can we get a quote? I think we can certainly try to do that. I just know how slow things go. It's not like we're going to be able, if, if we get a quote, it could be, it could be six months before we have anything installed, you know?
So, Matt? We have Julie Lemire on. Can we discuss whether or not the supervisors of the checklist can meet in town hall?
You took the words out of my mouth, and Julie, thanks for waiting. And if you don't mind, if I sort of cut to the chase with you is, you guys do this all the time. You're required to do this. And I actually remember when I first moved to town eons ago, this is when I registered to vote, because I had just moved into town. So to me, it doesn't sound like you're thinking you're going to have 100 people. It's just that you may, you may have the possibility is you could have a busload of people drive up and wanting to register to vote. But the main thing is, under the law, you have to have a half-hour window in case people want to come. Is that true?
That's absolutely true. And honestly, I think the most that I've ever had is 10 people. And so to pile on to that a little bit, so it's a mandatory meeting. I have to meet. And I was already planning on bringing my eight-foot table and just setting up outside, but we're going to, it's going to be raining on Saturday. I can't do this at the police station because I need access to my Alpha, my Alpha books, which are all in the cabinet there. And then I was in picking up new registrations the other day from Mary Jo, and she said that her and Bob Demelsik are planning to be there that day to accept any incoming absentee ballots that people might have. So they're going to be there as well. My thought after I had emailed Diane to, you know, get some permission from you guys and talking to Mary Jo, and Trish was in the building as well, is that maybe, you know, maybe we just set up so that I can, that the main, you know, the main door downstairs is open, and people could just come in. I can actually stick a table like right across, so they can't even come in past that entrance area where the file cabinets are. You know, and maybe make it so that they have to wait out in their car and, you know, when I have just let one person in at a time or something. I mean, I could do anything. I just need, you know, I don't want to get wet. And, and I need access to Alpha Books. So, I mean, I would do whatever you guys wanted. Trish had also thought that maybe we have people come in and then follow the pathway, and they exit out the other, the other door, the front entrance, which I think is the way that the pattern is set up right now. But you guys let me know. I mean, I'd be happy to wipe down surfaces and I mean, I'm disinfecting my Airbnb. I'm sure I could help with the town hall.
What's the, what's the board think about, we open it up for them on Saturday? We have them set up a table so there's kind of enough room so people can get in and line up six feet apart. But, but the hall is open to them if they need it. Like I said, and Julie just backed me up, the, it's not an anticipated crowd. It's probably just be a handful of people, but they have to have it. Is the board okay if we open it up for them and they can arrange it as they need to in order to maintain social distancing? What's everybody think?
I'm good with that. Just to affirm that they will be disinfecting when they leave.
Yep.
Yeah, so are you talking about upstairs in the hall or the main entrance down in, like Town Clerk area?
I think upstairs hall is better because you have more room, so you can maintain the six-foot distancing if you get a couple of people at the same time.
Okay, my, all right.
Unless you prefer to do it downstairs.
Well, so the reason why I would prefer to do it downstairs is because I would have access to my books, which are in the file cabinets.
Diane is waving.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have five minutes left, and it's a hard stop, so wrap it up.
So I'm going to make a motion to allow the supervisor of the checklist access to the first floor. I guess it's the first floor, first floor of the town hall to set it up for a social-distanced meeting for their supervisors' meeting as required by law.
I check.
I got three seconds on that, which is awesome. So I'm going to give it to Lisa, and we'll do a roll call vote. Charlie, how do you vote?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Lisa?
Nay. No, just kidding. How am I?
And Matt and I, so I, I think what the board is saying, Julie, is we trust you to do things the right way.
Yeah, I will.
To clean your, your way out of there.
Yeah, I will. I'll, I'll, there'll be at least two of us there, and basically, I'll just, you know, put up a big sign that says, call myself, or, I don't know, call my cellphone when you're here, and we'll come out and get you. I'll just make sure that one person's coming in at a time.
Yep.
All right. All right.
Great, thank you.
And I'll bring my disinfecting stuff.
Yes, yeah, that's valuable.
Yeah. All right, thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Charlie, what were you saying?
You better go through your COVID-19 spiel. The COVID-19 spiel.
Oh, right. Any, yeah, absolutely. Let me find that. While I'm finding that, Diane, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so as Chairman of the Board of Select, Town of Newton, New Hampshire, find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom software for this electronic meetings. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during the meeting in the platform if necessary by dialing the following number. It was 929-205-6099, meeting ID 86907536632. We're using the link provided. Notice was given to the public about how to access. If, if the public wasn't able to access, they were given the ability to contact the BOSS Secretary via email. Please note that all votes were taken during this meeting done by the roll call vote. So anybody want to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, Charlie's got that. Anybody want a second? All right, so thank you for your attention, everybody, and we'll be talking next week. Have a good night.
Yep.
Thank you. Bye.